Live in five, four.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this special session of the Board of Trustees meeting for North Idaho College. In order to start this meeting, I'd like to do what we traditionally do with our meetings, and I'll ask all of you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Our meeting tonight has a single item on the agenda, and it is the consideration of Senate Bill 1254. And in order to start the meeting, I'm going to ask our Vice President of Legislative Affairs to give us a rundown of what the bill contains. Mark?
Good, Andy. Mr. Chairman, President Dunlap, members of the Board of Trustees, Barrister Lyons, thank you for the opportunity to stand here this evening. Senate Bill 1254 was passed out of the Senate State Affairs Committee yesterday morning, Monday morning, for a print hearing sponsored and introduced by its chairman, Senator Kurt McKenzie, Republican out of Nampa. I just want to run through some of the provisions of the proposed legislation, and it's important to note at this point, this, it has, it's printed, it now has a bill number, 1254, as you mentioned. It is known as the Secure Idaho Act, the Safer Environment for College and University Residents and Employees. And the crux of the bill is that it adds a new section to the Idaho Code, which would be 183309. Under the Secure Act, it starts by reaffirming and consenting to the existing authority for colleges and universities governing boards to prescribe rules, including rules governing firearms. But then it goes on to say, "with the following exceptions," and it addresses two sections of code, 183302H, which is retired law enforcement, and the new section added last year, which is 183302 Paragraph K, which is the new enhanced concealed carry permit that was passed by the legislature last year. There are some restrictions, as proposed under 183309, that would permit the carry of weapons on a campus with the following exceptions: You could not carry, regardless of your permit status, in any dormitory or residence hall, or into any facility on a campus which has a seating capacity of 1,000 or greater. So in our case, that would be Schuler Auditorium and Christianson Gymnasium. It does not restrict the carry in anything less than 1,000, so the hallways in Boswell for an art show, any classroom, any laboratory, library, the Student Union Building, this room has a seating capacity, I believe, around 250, 275. Live firearms would also be permitted there. Children's Center, any facility that we have here on campus would be permitted. So there's a couple of things in analyzing the bill that, as a government affairs person, trustees, I believe, ought to consider. 33201 establishes your authority in Idaho Code to have a locally elected Board of Trustees to adopt policies for governance of the institution. The bill, in its essence, reaffirms that in the opening paragraph, but then would propose to take some of those provisions away from you, and you would not have the authority, should the bill pass, to address those particular parts of the governance structure.
Mark, say that again. We would back one.
So 33201, Idaho Code, Chapter 33, Section 201, establishes community colleges throughout the state. That's also the same section which establishes the five northern counties as NIC's area that we are to serve legislatively. That's that same section of code, 332101. Right. I had a little thing with that last week, which seemed like about three weeks ago, so... One thing to consider, and not just our campus, but all campuses across the state, is the nature of folks who use our campus. We have folks all the way from just a very few months of life, all the way through to those of us who might be a little longer in the tooth and a little whiter on top. So we have folks of all ages here on campus, not just those who would fall under the provisions of the bill at age 21 and older. That includes elementary school students who come here for field trips, they participate in music camps, we have a very high number of dual-credit students, high school-age students who come and take their classes physically here on our campuses. All things for you folks to consider about the nature of our campus users. So one of the big questions that is coming out in the analyzing of the bill is, is it a question of local control? Is it a question of your authority as a Board of Trustees, locally elected, to regulate and set policies on your campus, or is it a constitutional issue? Those are the things that you'll need to grapple with. Other things that we'll need to look at will be some of the other stakeholders who need to be involved in the process. As we know, it's more than just us that are here at NIC. We are a community college. We have direct relationships with our own security, with the local law enforcement, both Coeur d'Alene City Police, Cootney County, the FBI, Idaho State Police. Our students, of course, are our primary concern, the safety and the well-being and the safe learning environment for our students, for our faculty, and for our staff. So those are all things that you'll need to take into consideration as you go through this bill tonight. Just as a matter of timeframe, it was printed yesterday morning. The chairman has said that he will hold a hearing, quote, "within two weeks." So he's given us a little bit of time, as he was told that all of us would want to go back to our local boards, that these were our existing policies, this was the stance of the existing policy as it stands, as of the date and time of the meeting, but that each board of, whether it's here, whether it's in Nampa, whether it's in Twin Falls, or whether they're one of the state institutions, that the local governance structure needs to weigh in on this. So there are nine members in that committee, it will take five votes to move it out of the committee. So, Mr. Chairman, I think that's all I've got for you at this point, that's a very brief overview of the bill, and I would turn that back to you.
Okay. In keeping with our normal procedure, if there are any questions that we would like to ask Mark at this time, and then after we proceed with some questions or statements, we'll move on. If there's a motion and a second, then we'll discuss that motion in a second. So with regard to Mark's comments, or anything about the bill that he might be able to answer?
Mark, are they looking for a uniform response by all the educational institutions on this?
Mr. Chairman, Trustee Nielsen, I would say that would be ideal, is that if all the institutions certainly carries more weight, if all of you are in lockstep. One of the things that I had the opportunity to talk to some folks yesterday, members of the meeting, one of the things that I emphasized was that, when you're talking about local control, one of the beauties of having local control is that you have the ability to address things that might be different here versus Nampa, or Twin Falls, or maybe one of the state institutions. And that's the beauty of a local organization, is that the five of you live here, you work here, and you have, at least in my estimation, a much better feel for what's happening in this community than, say, someone who's 425 miles away. But yes, the answer to your question is yes. I think that the most effective would be is if everybody stood together.
Yes, follow-up on that, Mark. So when you look at the decisions that are made at a local level, as we look at the proximity of our police response time compared to maybe somebody that is in a different part of there, when you see a response time of minutes versus half-hour type of response time, they hope to take that into consideration when they're looking at any revisions that they would want to make on this bill?
Mr. Chairman, Trustee Nielsen, I think all the revisions that could be made have been made. We met with the sponsor for a fairly lengthy meeting. He indicated in all the suggestions that we had in terms of additional revisions to the bill, that while he appreciated our concern that the bill is what it is at this point, and they're going to move forward with it. So I will say that one of the revisions that was made, the original limit on the seating capacity was 2,500. They did revise that down to try to accommodate community colleges. They did not go all the way to the accommodation, which was recommended, which was one, but we got partway there.
Judy?
Part of the housekeeping question is, this bill now is in its final form, there are no other changes to it for this hearing that's coming up.
Mr. Chairman and Trustee Meyer, that is correct. However, as you know, there is always an ability to amend a bill once it hits the floor. Should it pass out of the committee, it could go to the floor, and then it could be referred to the 14th Order, which is the amending order within the Senate. And that's, there's always a possibility, until the bill goes off both Houses, both the House and the Senate, there's always a possibility for amendment.
Paul?
Follow-up is, therefore, this is the bill we need to ponder now, because at this point, that's what we have.
Yes.
Could you flashback, then, to the two questions you identified that we should be thinking about? Those are the folks, but here are the two that you've highlighted. I'd be curious if the board had any other aspects or points to consider while we do our discussion. And if not from the board, then from our administration.
Any other questions? Judy, or Christie? Todd, do you have any questions of Mark?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have the bill before us now, and so it's up to this Board of Trustees to determine whether or not we're going to support it, not support it, or not take a stand on it. We have those options, and maybe you'll think of some more, but those are the three options I think we have available to us. Does anybody want to make a motion? And if we get a second, we'll discuss it. Todd?
I guess I want to be sure I'm clear on this, because we seem to do this, and it seems so backwards to me every time. So we pass a motion, and then we'll all be able to make comments and discuss this, right? Instead of talking about it and discussing it before someone actually throws out a motion...
Yeah.
Okay. Just seems backwards to me, Mr. Chair.
Well, the purpose of it generally is that we know exactly what we're talking about when we have a motion that we have to, that has a second. If we don't have the motion in front of us, and we just discuss it, we just don't know what direction we're looking at in terms of our discussion. That's the purpose.
Single-focus meeting, one item, approve or disapprove or support this. I didn't think there was a lot of ambiguity there, but maybe I missed it. Go ahead.
Well, if you have other suggestions, make it by way of a motion, and if we can get a second and discuss it, we should do that. Is the meeting over?
No.
We wish.
Yeah.
I think trustee Bandici would like an opportunity for discussion, so I will give him that opportunity. I'll make a motion to oppose Senate Bill Number 1254.
To do what?
Oppose Senate Bill Number 1254.
Have a second?
Meyer seconds it.
Okay. Now, we discuss the bill, the motion is to oppose it, and is there any discussion on the motion? Judy?
I think this fits into this moment, and that is, I would be interested in our current policy comparison with what this says.
Oh, the dangerous weapons one? I have a copy of it right here, if you'd like to see it. Dangerous weapons.
That's fine. Rather than read it during the meeting, I was interested in hearing, particularly the administration, the history I have of the policy is different, maybe, than what you, as administration, live now.
Yeah. Let me read the current policy.
Okay.
The statement is, "Dangerous weapons are potential safety hazards. Possession, use, or display of dangerous weapons or firearms is inappropriate in an academic community unless authorized by North Idaho College. The weapons policy is possession, display, or storage of a dangerous weapon, including but not limited to firearms, ammunition, destructive devices, fireworks, or hazardous chemicals, in any form is prohibited on the property owned or controlled by North Idaho College, except as noted under the procedures relevant to this policy. This policy involves the prohibition of the above referenced items on or in college property and facilities, including but not limited to academic buildings, athletic and recreation facilities, administrative offices, college housing, college parking areas, college streets, and college vehicles. It shall also apply to private vehicles parked on or operated on college-owned property or controlled property."
Which is an unenforceable and illegal policy, because anybody driving on a city street through our campus would fall under that, and we cannot enforce that. For just one of the glaring gaps in this policy or errors.
Yes.
Another question is, we read and think about it, how does this work when we have other public events on campus? Art on the Green?
I think...
I don't know, but that...
Yeah. I think if you read the bill as presented, even with the two exceptions of retired law enforcement, or a enhanced CCW, concealed weapons permit, those are restrictions, the restrictions in terms of, like, housing, doesn't apply. So if we had, for instance, Art on the Green, specifically, this bill excludes us extending that prohibition to any guns on campus, even to those two groups, to areas outside of the buildings.
Outside of the building.
Yeah.
Whereas the current policy that we have...
Says that you can't have it anyplace on the campus.
And that's what I was trying to think through, was the scale of what this policy says with what the legislation is offering.
Yeah. Ron?
I'm going to need some clarification. My understanding with the discussions that have taken place between our four four-year institutions and our three two-year institutions, none of the educational institutions follow this current guideline proposed under Senate Bill 1254. Is that true?
Correct.
So at this point, all four institutions are going to be forced to look at this and say, do they want to adhere to this policy? Or under 33201, do you have the ability to modify this bill in a way which means is that you are not accepting this bill to be the law in, under this campus? Is that right?
Yeah. I'm afraid we don't have any authority to modify the bill at all. It comes to us from the legislature in its form, and from what I just heard from Mark, that the bill, any amendments to the bills, the bill has been completed from the author's position, and no further amendments are going to be considered. That doesn't mean on the floor, somebody, some legislator might do that, but we don't have any power to amend it at this time, only by way of suggestion and testimony at the time the bill comes up for hearing.
Well, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering if the modification that would be appropriate for this institution, which is to be as simple as to say is that we still will continue to have restrictions on weapons of mass destructions, or that is in conflict with our current weapons policy, but what we'd like to do is to do some simple tweak to knowing what's the ever tending tride of unsafe environment, that we would want to arm our security team here to give some comfort level. We don't have the ability to do anything other than to accept this as it's written, or to reject it, and then meet with the other institution and see if we can come onto some common language that would be accepted by them, if they know that this is the will of all seven higher education institutions. Is that true?
If I follow your question, and it was a long one, I don't know, I think that you're correct, that our options are to either endorse this bill, or oppose it, or maybe take some other stand on it. And when we do that, if the other institutions do the same, if they oppose it and we oppose it, or if they endorse it and we endorse it, then that would be something that would be after our meeting here today. We have to have a consensus of this board as to what we're going to do, and then we'll take it to the other boards and see what they want to do, so we can see if there's a collective voice, or if there's separate claims.
Mr. Chairman and trustees, you're talking about four boards here. There's the three community college boards that you're all very familiar with, yourselves, College of Western Idaho, College of Southern Idaho. Every other institution in the state falls under the State Board of Education. So you're talking about four boards having to make this decision. In terms of your direct question, trustee Nielsen, you folks, if you were to draft policy through the administration, go through a first reading and a second reading, and adopt the policy, you have the authority right now to change a policy such that security here on campus could carry. Or if you wanted to allow any other exemption, you have that authority right now. But what's before you tonight is a position on Senate 1254, which, depending on which way you want to read the bill, it certainly would erode some of your authority to make that decision for yourself. Now, if you're in favor of what some of those provisions are, then that's where your position's going to be. If you're not, then certainly you're going to be on the opposition side. But right now, as of this moment, you have the authority to regulate a policy, if it comes before you, to accept a policy change here on the campus. But you're talking about four boards statewide, over eight institutions.
So, Mark, how do we take any exception to, as written in its final form, how do we make any exceptions to this without rejecting this in full?
Mr. Chair and trustee Nielsen, at this point, you really don't have that option. You have the option to either oppose or endorse the legislation, and then if you want to make some sort of change, you could do that here locally, but changes that would affect or be adopted by other boards would be entirely up to them if they wanted to do the same thing.
So...
Yes. Go ahead.
So, Mark, if we take exception to any part of that, we basically need to do is to reject this bill as written, make a strong suggestion for policy and procedures that we would like to see on this particular campus as an elected board, and then we could, that would become in the governing rules for this, or can this, will this supersede our policy?
Mr. Chair and trustee Nielsen, should 1254 pass and be signed by the governor into law, it would supersede that. Now, ultimately, there are those who will say this is headed to a court conflict, and that the Supreme Court will have to decide. Because if you have competing codes, which is often the case in Idaho, we often pass changes to a code that, and I think your attorney will tell you, that this is what the courts are based on. When there are disagreements in interpretation of different competing areas of code, it often goes to the courts to decide. But I would, as someone who just follows public policy and works in it, I would see that there would be a direct conflict that would have to be decided at some point.
So during the formation of this, that we know that all of the other institutions are not aligned with this, so at some point, you wonder why this discussion didn't take place in a more depth level that says, we would like to poll the institutions, the educational institution across the state, and say, we're trying to get a consensus of what you believe. Our policy might be, is that we support a gun-free zone on this campus, but we want to engage our security officers, and maybe a handful of selected teachers enter some special conditions, where that they've gone through fire handgun training, that they're certified, they do all this type of stuff, and then that is the policy we have here, because we're blessed to be right down the road from a police department that has quick response team. That's very specialized to our needs and wants, but if, I don't know how they cannot do it almost on a site-by-site, or at least get the overall feedback from all of the educational institution to see what is it that they want to see as a standard rule and regulation?
Mr. Chair and trustees, I would tell you that I cannot speak for the sponsor and what his intentions are in the drafting of the bill, but we got a heads-up on the bill, what is today? Today's Tuesday, Thursday morning around 11:30. Yeah. So it has, it's not been through the normal vetting process where you bring stakeholders in and ask, you know, hey, we feel like we need to make a change here, what would work best for you, and what can we work out? That's what we've worked on all weekend, and we've got to a point where it's, this is the bill that's in front of us. The language that has come out is on National Rifle Association letterhead. It's very similar to other bills that are being put forward in other state legislatures across the country.
Judy, you had a question or a statement?
I think I remember it by now. What I was thinking about, part of the question, was probably clarified by Ron, and that is, the magic of local control is, we have a policy, we can adapt it and adopt, we've already adopted it, so now we can adapt it at any time we want. Does this legislation become an educational tool for us, of things that we need to think about and do want to change, which I would choose to do rather than accept something from the state level?
Hang on just a minute. Joe?
I want to, Mr. Chair, jump back to trustee Nielsen's comment, because I think, and I don't mean to speak for him, but I think you're after the answer to, can we arm our security on this campus?
Yes, sir.
And the provisions of this bill indicate that in order to carry a firearm on a campus, you must meet certain criteria. If our security meets that criteria, there is nothing to preclude them from being armed on this campus.
Christie?
This is actually directed at Dr. Dunlap. I believe we might have had some feedback from campus employees, Senate, on what their position is on guns on campus. Could you share that?
We are in the process of updating all of our policies on campus, and one of the policies is the one that was referenced earlier with regard to dangerous weapons on campus. That has gone through the college senate, and the college senate fully endorsed the policy as it exists today with no recommended changes. President's cabinet endorses the existing policy as it is with no recommended changes.
Done.
And that's a huge surprise. All right. Well, let's chat for a minute. I guess we all get our comments, I'm going to get mine in now. You know, we talked about local control. We're in North Idaho, where hunting is a way of life, is part of our culture, more so than any of the other locations or the other higher institutions of learning, the three community colleges or the four four-year institutions. So we do have a different culture up here. I, myself, am a life member of the NRA. Here's the NRA saying, let's talk about sensible legislation. Is the educational liberal mind incapable of compromise, or to even look at something outside what their strident opinion is of what they have to have? It's amazing how we have such a knee-jerk reaction to anything to do with weapons by the elite educated. I mean, I look at this, and I look at this Evie Hudak, who was the state senator in Colorado, who resigned rather than being recalled after Colorado passed nonsensical laws for gun control, and we've got a gal that comes and testifies, and Hudak ridicules her, and she's all five foot two, and she was terribly brutally raped. And she was a concealed carry, permit carrier. And it was in a parking garage, just 500 feet from the campus police headquarters. So I challenge you, again, minutes, even minutes, it's too long. You know, and her comment was, I've gone through all of it, I've shot, I possessed the right to carry permit at the time, but the university wouldn't allow me to carry my handgun on campus. And oh, by the way, her rapist went on to kill another woman before being caught. In her testimony, she believed that the incident might have ended differently had she been allowed to carry her firearm. I just want to say that actually, statistics say that I have a chance to defend myself. Okay? You know, it's amazing how we keep talking about even arming our security here on the campus. I'm all in favor of that, Ron, you know I've been ever since I came on the board. Properly trained people, I have no problem with them having a firearm. Mark gives us a speech up there, and that was a speech, it wasn't a presentation. Mark, you gave me the demographics of every local apartment complex, mall, and theater. You're supposed to tell me about the bill. I don't care about the demographics on the campus, that doesn't tell me anything about the bill. That's an emotional appeal, it's a red herring, to tell me all the reasons why weapons are bad, because we have these people on campus. We have these people everywhere, every day, everywhere we walk, all around us, there's guns. We used to have them on the rack in our thing. I took hunter's safety when I was at the Lakeland School District at the school building in Rathrum. You know, we've gone crazy. We live in North Idaho, where the vast majority of the people enjoy the outdoors and many, many, many hunt. So can we never get to just a compromise of some common sense? Here, what are we looking at? Oh, let's see, people that have gone through extensive, advanced training and law enforcement. Wow, you're right. You know, that's just absurd that we'd even consider those two people capable of carrying a firearm reasonably. Really? That's well above the standard. We talk about local control, well, actually, we're usurping the state law. State law in this county, in this state, is wide open. You've been to the Capitol, Mark? How much security is at the Capitol? I walked right into everywhere. Saw the picture the other day of the guy with the rifle slung over his back, visiting with the security guy, because it's open carry in this state everywhere. And in the Capitol, you can walk right up the steps, carrying your AK-47 if you want. So we're putting a higher standard here than we even have at our own Capitol building. Does that make you wonder for just a second exactly what we're trying to accomplish, and if it's reasonable? I mean, take a step back, and Christie, I know you're going to disagree with me, and I have all this respect for the law enforcement. To me, there's just an extension of the military. Your domestic were foreign. And a lot of the military guys, you know, prior service guys, are in law enforcement, so well-trained. But we even had the debate about whether you're technically always on duty, not on duty, off duty, are you required to carry your gun, are you actually legal under the rules, you know? I think that we, I think we need to open our eyes to the reality of our culture here in North Idaho, and if we have local control, then maybe we need to rethink this a little bit. bit. I guess that's my say.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, it might be helpful. Trustee Banducci talked about the specialized training for the enhanced concealed carry. There are some provisions that a person must go through to get the added endorsement of enhanced concealed carry. You have to be a resident of the state of Idaho for a minimum of six months. You have to take an in-person training course, and there is also.
Shooting requirement.
Thank you. There was a shooting requirement of 100 rounds at the range that you must complete, and then that permit is good for five years. You're not required to take any additional fire training within the five year of the permit, but you do have to pass that in order to get the enhanced portion of the carry over and above just a regular concealed carry. One of the other things that I think is important to know, that there are reciprocal agreements with other states as far as concealed carry. In order to get the enhanced provision, which would be exempted out of this, you have to be a resident of the state of Idaho. So if someone has a concealed carry permit from Washington or Idaho or any other state that is recognized, they would not be permitted under the legislation as it's proposed. But that's where the training is at. They have to take an in-person class, they have to go to the range, fire 100 rounds, have to be a resident of the state of Idaho, and it's good for five years.
Any other comments, Mr. Christie?
Well, Todd, I can hear your frustration, but I think I would ask you also to hear what the trustees are saying. Certainly, we all agree with you that we want our campus to be as safe as it can possibly make it. We want our students to come here in a safe environment. And I think that there's probably some really good room for discussion about arming our security. I've been in favor of that. I'd actually prefer actual law enforcement working on campus. And so there is room for a little bit of movement locally. Retaining local control lets us make that move in any direction that we want. So we're not that far apart. We're probably a little farther apart than you want us to be. I could never support this bill as it's written, but this board certainly cares about the safety of our students, our faculty, our administrators, and I think that you'll see some, maybe some movement in the future about arming our security.
Excuse me, have you ever noticed where the sign is hung that says, "Gun-free zone" is where these guys are killing everybody, because there's nobody armed to resist them? Have you noticed the national movement in so many schools that are starting to arm? Even Washington, which is one of the most liberal states, has talked and are starting to look at arming and doing some different things. Wow, if the folks over on the west side even could start considering that, it's like you, if there's not going to be any opposition, somebody knows there's no opposition, it's like an invite, in my opinion. You know, strong defense is the best offense. Sorry.
You have a comment, Ron?
Yes, well, Todd, you know, I own a handgun, so I believe in the constitutional right to have that, but I also believe that the safety of our students are the most important thing, and we don't talk about how many guns are used in an emotional state on campuses where they're drinking and doing things where that if we take that out of the play. I believe, I believe that we can't just make a broad statement that we do not, under any circumstances, modify this. I think that in some cases, that, especially in the case of this educational institution, that if we can strengthen our security to our students without going all the way to a point where we just say, "Everybody that comes here, this is the college that opens JARMs and everybody's got six guns hanging from the side of their 10th class," I think we can find some way that we can come to a happy meeting that says that for our institution, for the safety of our students, that we want to be able to restrict guns to those, to the people other than this select group of people, and part of this security would come from the security officers that are here, that's their full-time job, and from a handful of maybe teachers that feel like that the security reaction time isn't there. But I struggle with the fact that we change our policy from no guns at all to what is being proposed under this Senate bill, 1254.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Ron, what you just said was that you just claimed it would be the Wild West, but let me remind you that there are some limitations inside this bill. For example, it stills not in the dormitory or the residence hall. They went from 2,500 to 1,500 to now 1,000 for the event centers, okay? So anything, 1,000 or more, no. So where are we generally going to have emotion in drinking? The dorms or the residence, possibly at an athletic event in the Christensen Gym or something like that. Otherwise, it'd just be a random act of violence like anywhere else in the city. So they put some exclusions in here for just those situations where you might be in a heightened condition of emotion or stress or partying in the dorm. So I think those are reasonable exclusions to try to bear that. What we're talking about here is being able to walk across the campus, you know, in the open buildings, you know? Again, I think this was designed to be a compromise, and that's why there are some exclusions that are specifically cited in here. So there's places, there's still, even if we say, "Yeah, we like this, and it's great, and it gets passed," there are still places on campus where there cannot be guns.
I guess, and not to make a joke of this, but there's times that a teacher's given me a grade that if I probably thought about all the things I'd like to do to the teacher, it would probably be something that wouldn't be pretty, and so I kind of look at this and say is that I'm not sure that we can, that these handful of exceptions are going to make that much difference. So this is the world according to Ron, and not necessarily, my wife necessarily agrees with me, but this is very personal for a lot of people that have, I've had a friend kill himself, and he shouldn't have had a gun, and it wasn't the best thing.
Could that maybe be a psychological issue?
Hang on, hang on, Todd.
I will bring up your indie academic reference.
Todd, please, wait to be, yeah. Judy, you made it patiently.
Yep, I, as I listened to the discussion, I think we do have some common themes of concern here. It's very clear for me that this is a local control issue, that if there are some more things we need to think about with our policy, I would welcome recommendations from our administration, as well as ourselves, as we talk about it. We can learn from this bill the things that are concerned to us, and whatever isn't, we don't have to include, and I would be ready to have our staff bring more ideas back to us, and us look at the policy and redo it if we need to. But I think it's a local control issue, and I would encourage my colleagues to view it that way.
I still have one more thing then, if I may, just touch on Ron, and I don't know the circumstances, you're a friend, and I don't mean to sound like I was being glib, but if that was a psychological or emotional issue, or if there was a dependency issue or some sort of addiction issue, I don't know those issues, but theirs where there's supposed to be safeguards in place also, that those people hopefully aren't going to have access to guns, or at least not be able to, as they file, you know, go to the FFL, the dealer's supposed to run the background check, and there's supposed to be things in the system, and I know, and Christie can speak to this, are trying to strengthen that and get the reporting better and have better records so that people that maybe shouldn't be allowed to buy a weapon are precluded from doing so. So there's supposed to be additional safeguards in place, hopefully, so we don't have somebody that shouldn't have a gun on our campus.
Christie, you had a comment?
Not a perfect system.
Mr. Chair, I tend to agree with Mr. Nielsen that the exemptions just certainly are enough for our comfort level, and even though we talk about the dormitories and the general areas, it doesn't preclude anything about your cars in the parking lot. So this isn't just, I just don't have a comfort level with this. I will tell you, local law enforcement, last time, we're very vocal, law enforcement across the state was very vocal and opposed, and I expect them to be the same with this bill, just the few leaders that I've talked to. So at this point, I would like to call for the question.
Well, before you do that, could I have a comment?
Yes, please.
So soon?
If you must.
Yeah. I've listened to all of you, and quite frankly, in going through this bill in some detail, in going through the bills that are, or the statutes that are referred to in this bill, I'm troubled by what's being proposed. When you look at this particular bill, it says that the authority of this college to prescribe rules and regulations relating to firearms shall not extend to regulating or prohibiting the otherwise lawful possession, carrying, or transportation of firearms by persons licensed under section 183302H or 183302K. Now, when you look at those two provisions, one relates to retired law enforcement, and the other relates to enhanced carry. When I look at the provisions for the retired law enforcement, I'm pretty much impressed, quite frankly, with the qualifications. First of all, it's a one-year permit, it's renewed on a one-year basis, whereas for enhanced CCW, it's a five-year permit. So we're making it easier for a citizen without training to get a permit than we are a trained law enforcement officer. In order for a law, a retired law enforcement officer to get it, they have to, during the immediate, excuse me, most recent 12 months period prior, at their own expense, they have to meet the standards for training and qualifications of the state required of the sheriff. So now we're requiring training of law enforcement officers that is equivalent to the training given to on-the-beat law enforcement officers every year, and we are not making that requirement of a, the enhanced concealed weapon. All they have to do is pass an NRA test or pass an NRA course, not test, but course, or some other equivalent course. And so what we've done under the ones, under the one qualification, is we've allowed ordinary citizens without training and dealing with stressful situations and conflict situations to obtain the right to carry on the campus, and we've restricted those that are trained to deal with conflict and stress situations. We've created a much harsher way for them to maintain a permit to carry on campus. So it just doesn't make any sense, quite frankly. If we're going to have, if we're going to authorize retired police officers to carry under the circumstances that require some ongoing training and ongoing commitment to knowing how to defuse conflict and stress situations, we ought to have that same requirement for those that we allow to carry who carry under a concealed weapon permit, and it's not in this bill. So I'm really, I'm really uncomfortable with creating that distinction. The other thing that I guess troubles me is they've singled out education here, all right? We don't have this kind of a proposal being made for carrying guns in the courthouse. They're not allowed, all right? In the county buildings, the county still has control over what's done in the county buildings. So they've singled out education with regard to this bill, and they've created unrealistic limits. We have hard-on-the-green here every year, and we have a large area where we have that, but under the wording of this bill, we could not restrict weapons on the grounds, because this bill specifically excludes publicly accessible outdoor grounds. We couldn't, they couldn't, we couldn't restrict carry in the student union building, because it may not meet the 1,000 occupancy. It is very difficult, if not impossible, to enforce when you put these arbitrary levels on it. How are we expected to enforce when they can and when they can't carry unless you frisk everybody coming on and determine the population of the venue that they're coming into? This particular bill, in my judgment, presents an unworkable solution for us to be able to try and provide safety for our students, and it creates classifications that are just absolutely unreasonable in my judgment. So I, one of the other problems is that when you, we couldn't even ask under this bill for people to report to our security those who are carrying before they come on, just so we know. Just so we know that if there's some problem that erupts, who has a concealed weapons permit and who doesn't, and what's the validity of it. But we couldn't even ask them that under this bill, because that's confidential and we're prohibited from asking it or regulating it. It presents an impossible situation for us to deal with in terms of trying to regulate the safety of this campus. And I think that while there may be, there may be some merit to trying to provide access to retired law enforcement officers under the provisions that they have, when they loosen that, those restrictions up for a private citizen, it just makes no sense. So yes, I think there is room for discussion on this in the future, and I think we should have a discussion on it, but it ought to be rational, and it ought to be based upon what we can enforce and what we can't enforce. And so I am not in favor of this legislation for those reasons, and so if you still want to call the question, I'm happy to do that, but if anybody else wants to make a statement.
Can we restate the question to include us addressing our current policy and voting on a rewriting our policy to accommodate maybe the changes in times that would say, "Arm our security officers and potentially arm selected groups of people that have gone through the proper training"? Can we amend that to state that accordingly?
Yeah, let me suggest that, I think they're two separate things, Ron. I think we need to deal with whether we're going to endorse this or reject it, or whatever. If we reject it or endorse it, either one, we can make a separate motion that we go ahead and reevaluate our policies, and that's something that I think is what you're asking for. That would be, that would be a separate thing after we decide what we're going to do with the bill before us. Yes, Judy?
Which reinforces the point I made, which is we want the control, local control, to modify, adapt, whatever it is that we set up here for our campus. And for me, that was the crux of, that's why I'm opposed to somebody else telling me why, when I'm elected locally, I have to follow, I can't make my own rules. My mom used to get mad at that, too.
Any other comments? All right, are we ready for a vote? The motion is that we oppose the Senate bill 12.
Four. Fifty-four.
1254.
1254. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I'm in favor. So that concludes our business for the evening. We are going to take this board position and share it with the other institutions, and then we will bring back to the board any comments that they have or any suggestions they may have, and depending on what that develops in terms of our conversations with them, there will probably be some position that we take before the legislature when it comes up for public discussion, and I will try and keep the board advised of that. Judy?
At this meeting, then, we don't morph from what we've said we don't want to do to giving direction to what we do want to look at, or do we need to do that at the regular board meeting?
No, I don't think we need to do that at a regular board meeting, but I think we may want to think about it for a little bit and try and fashion a motion about what we want the administration to do, because if we're asking them to reconsider our present policy, we ought to give them some guidelines on that, and I think we ought to give some thought to that.
Well, Ken, the time that we spent with the other three community colleges and a little bit of the variance in what they consider their policy and procedures on this, that it would be interesting to, for us to come to an idea that we support from this campus of what our policy would be, and see if we can't get a consensus amongst the other community colleges so that we don't stand as an island except for maybe response time. There's, one of the articles I read was about it down in Texas, and that they have this, but the key factor for having all of these teachers and security guards all armed was the response time was over 35 minutes. Well, this is a local issue, we don't have that response time. So I'd love to be able to get to a point where we can state our policy and come to agreement, and then we encourage all the other educational institutions in the state to state their policy and come to, and see if we can't come to some way of making this bill a little bit more understandable from, when it comes to higher education, different than maybe K-12 education.
Todd?
Well, the lunacy of this is you take someone like myself, carry permit in Idaho, carry permit in Utah, highly-trained military individual, I was a weapons instructor, expert marksman, avid outdoorsman and hunter, got my deer this year, it was a nice little buck. I'm illegal on this campus if I have my gun. I'll challenge anybody for your training. I'm as capable, yet I can't carry on this campus. Does that make sense, really? Am I a danger, or am I potentially more of a help if there's a situation? So do we start splitting hairs? Ron talks about, you know, do we start making exceptions? Okay, we talked about retired police officers. Do we start extending to military? I mean, Curly, tell me about it, military guys, how much training do you think we get? How often do we shoot? How much? You want guys on campus that can handle a weapon in case there's a situation for a quick response?
Yeah, Todd, we're not having public comment tonight, so I think we get your point, though. And I think everybody is saying, Todd, that we ought to get together, quite frankly, and we ought to see if we can explore a policy that is something that we can, that we can all kind of embrace, and I think that takes some rational approach that we ought to work on. We ought to ask our administration to work on it, and we can use this particular bill as a basis for looking at solutions that we might looking at solutions that we might be able to suggest, so. And I would hope that in the near future, the very near future, we can do that. Yes, Judy?
In preparation for that kind of thinking, is there any point in asking the administration to check with the local security folk around to be ready to explain to us what's currently available, or what partnering we could do, some of those things? Or is that too soon to start that discussion?
I don't know. I think, I would think that what we ought to do, and we can maybe address this at the next board meeting, is authorize and get a specific motion put together to authorize the administration to look into this, and we ask them to examine certain aspects, and they should come back to us with some recommendations. All right? If there are no further comments, we are adjourned.